We are on.
All right. Thanks, everybody for coming. We've got one item on the agenda today, which is just to look at liquor store. We're calling it budget work session, but really, we're going to look at some financial results from this year compared to previous years, just to kind of understand what's going on. It's a few charts we'll look at, talk about a couple of data points, and then Chris is here to answer any questions and have whatever conversation we need to have. There won't be any decisions we're asking the council to make today. So I'm going to take over presenting. Everybody see this chart? I assume that was a yes. I couldn't see any of you, sorry.
Yep, we can, Mike.
So this one you've seen before. And so we have a series of these. We'll just quickly run through to look at how our sales are occurring in a month, but by day of the week. So you can kind of see where we're doing as well as we have in the past, Monday through Thursday. Sundays, we're not doing any sales. And then on the weekends, we have a shortfall compared to the last three years. And that shortfall in April was maybe $2,000 a day on Friday and Saturday, and not quite that on Sunday. On May, you can see it's a very similar pattern, but the difference is getting a little bit bigger on the weekends. Where we were doing over 10,000 an average a day on Fridays for 17, 18, 19, 20, it's it's down at that 6,500. In May, we were really just starting to figure out how to operate with some of our new COVID rules. In June, you can start to see that business has generally picked up in previous years, but in 2020, we stayed just a little bit behind everything, similar shape to the curve, but every day was a little bit behind where we were in previous years in June. But the same pattern of a real stark difference on the weekends versus during the week, it was pretty close. By July, I think we've really dialed in how we're operating the store with the COVID rules. Our staff is comfortable and on board, and we're doing pretty big days every day that we're open. And as you can see, Monday through Thursday, those days are just as big as we've done in previous years. And then we get to the weekends, and there's still just a little bit of difference, and it's a little bit smaller than was the month before, but it's that same kind of 3,000, $2,000 to $3,000 a day difference that we see on Fridays and Saturdays, and then Sundays are at zero. And in August, we actually had Mondays better than we've had them in the past. And that difference on the weekend is just slightly lower. But you can see 14,000 a day average on Fridays in August as opposed to in July was just a little bit under that. So this is a typical pattern of of month by month, which we'll next look at that. This might be hard to see if you've got a small screen. I'll be emailing this out to everybody, so you can take a look at it later. Plus, this presentation is recorded if people want to take a look at it. But you can see that our monthly differences down 30,000 ish in March, pretty close in April, and then May and June, we were really down quite a bit, 60 and 70,000 each. Whereas in July and August, that difference was more like 37, 42, and about 11 and 12% below where we've been. So we expect that trend to continue at that kind of below where we've been, 11 or 12%. If that happens in September, October, November, December, we'll end up a year actually about 12% under where we were gross in the past. And about $300,000 gross sales below where we were in the past. When we're talking about a profit margin of 30%, that's 75 to $95,000 of difference in what we would have expected profit wise. Let's take a look at one more chart, just as a quick information. This is just data from 2018 and 19 that shows the number of sales per hour. So by time of day. And the point of this slide is just to note that between eight and 10, we generally have about 4% of our sales. So that that we've been closing at eight, this is about a 4% of our sales that wanted to occur there, they had to get shifted back to previous hours. So the total revenue versus expenditure is something that we report to you on a monthly basis in the spreadsheets that Kim sends out. And as of August, at the end of August results, we were showing the municipal liquor fund with year-to-date revenue totals of $1,347,000 and expenses of $1,358,000. So a loss of $11,000 on just over 1.3 million in sales. That loss is after we pay all of our expenses. So it's all of our cost of sales, all of our labor expenses, all of our rent that they pay to the general fund. And it's also our all of the monthly allotments of the $200,000 that we budget to take the liquor fund every year. So we've been able to fund our entire operation, including the transfer that was that was planned with a shortfall of about $11,000 through August. And we would, I think, expect to see that shortfall get a little bit bigger as the year goes on. But if it's proportionate, then we're in that, you know, $15,000 range of shortfall, which I think is really as good as I think we could have expected this year, given how some of the months looked in May and June. So we think about 2021 operations. I'll let Chris talk about some of the factors that that he's observed that kind of result in in the numbers we're looking at, but we expect. I think it's probably smart for us to think that all these factors are going to stay the same in 2021. And we can always hope that there's a change that occurs where some of these COVID operating rules are going to be different for us by the time we get the summer of 2021, but for now it's not clear whether that's going to happen. So when we look at our budget, we think, okay, there may be a little bit of a shortfall in that $200,000. And one of the decisions that we'll have for you to think about for the next couple of months before December is do we want to reduce that transfer that we plan next year? And if so, do we want to talk about using reserves to make it up? Do we want to talk about using the levy to make it up? Or do we want to look at cutting expenses somewhere else to make it up? So that's not something we need to dig into too much today, but we just wanted to give you some background information today on where that where that's coming from. So if there's any questions, I have them now, but otherwise, we're going to let Chris chat a little bit.
I have a, well, it's probably a couple part question, but we obviously know that we're down and we've made changes to due to COVID. Can you talk about what those changes maybe were, Chris? And I'll say even into near June? And what we've done? I know one of the changes was that we we reduced hours. So have we extended ours anymore? If we haven't, what have been some of the reasons that we haven't resumed normal operations, if that makes sense? Can you talk a little bit about that? And then so we have an idea of what's really happening and then how we would want to move forward?
Well, our hours are still reduced from what they what they typically are at the time of year, but from from when we started with having to deal with COVID stuff from being open from 11 to 10 to eight. So we've extended the hours there. As far as I'm thinking how the best to answer your question, COVID-related things. Yeah, I mean, well, you know, May and I believe the beginning of June was all mail-in or call-in, excuse me. So no one could come in the store. At that point, we also were not taking cash, which we still aren't doing. But I think that's something that we can do no problem. As far as extending hours go, we would have to hire some more staff in order to do that. And I don't know if going into this time of year, since it's, you know, we're we're essentially what, three weeks from M E A right now? And we're and we're going to start dying down if we if we necessarily if we really, I don't know if we really need to do that at this point. Everybody's kind of getting is pretty used as far as customers are pretty used to COVID hours of operation. And if you look at that chart that Mike presented with the daily sales and the times of day when we're selling our most product, we are definitely open during the busiest parts of the day. You know, if you look at from nine to 10 and eight o'clock and after, that's making up maybe 4% of our total sales.
Okay, so this, we are, I will say, are we at pre, are we at normal pre-COVID staffing? For FTEs?
Um, I would say no.
Okay. Do you know what we're down by? I mean, obviously, that's part of your reduction of hours. I'm just wondering what we're down for FTEs compared to pre-COVID times? And then what the, you know, like if you if you were to say, yeah, we're at normal FTEs and our hours were reduced still, I was wondering just so we have background, what the additional work is now that we're in COVID, whether people are cleaning more, not putting as much on the shelf, you know, that kind of stuff? Does that make sense, my question?
Well, that that part totally, yeah. I mean, I'd say we're probably, I don't know, about six shifts short. If that may maybe not a person, but six shifts. We're probably about short more than we would usually be. You know, during the bulk, during the bulk of the summer or until, you know, or during the during the call-in period, you know, we had, we were probably staffed more than now, just because of the things we had to do. You know, we had, we had one person answering phones, two people putting orders together, two people delivering orders, another person, you know, it's just it's it it's it's a lot more labor intensive with the phone ordering stuff, you just as opposed to people just coming in. Plus, you you know, you just can't make as many sales when you're on the phone as in person. Use me one second. Grand Murray Liquor. We're good.
Chris, maybe talk a little bit about the additional interaction with with customers when they come in, and then also talk a little bit about any additional cleaning and disinfecting that you're doing.
Well, that stuff is, you know, the interaction with people is constant. We're trying to get people to sanitize their hands when they walk in, getting people to wear their masks properly. You know, all that kind of stuff, cleaning cooler doors several times a day, all door handles several times a day, countertops, things like that. I feel like we're being very safe, and I feel like my staff is very comfortable with how we're with how we're we've got things going right now as far as cleanliness and safety goes.
Are we are we looking at any ways with what we showed? And I I'm going to use an example. I know that we showed we're down about 11,000 right now. Are we looking at any ways to try and obviously going into fall, winter, it's hard to make it up, but do you not have staff? I know Sundays in the summertime, I think we were doing about 550, 500. So I said, if we average 4,000 a Sunday for 52 Sundays a year, that's over 200.
About, probably about. We do need to keep in mind, too. I didn't hear any of your last part of what you said, Kelly.
Oh, no, that's okay. I'm just wondering if we're looking at being open on Sundays, or if you're running into staff shortages? You know, and I don't know if it's
Oh, right now, I have that shortage that wouldn't allow me to be open on Sundays.
Okay, okay.
And I also, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, we'd have to hire probably a couple of people. I've got a lot of people that work maybe one or two days a week right now. This is definitely their second or third job. One of the biggest things that accounts for the difference, too, is the lack of Canadian business. You know, with the with the border being closed, we're probably losing I bet they easily made up 25% of our sales in a normal year. So to have that piece of the pie missing is a big deal.
So then that's that's a really good point, and that's some of the stuff, you know, that I'm trying to figure out here with you is to say, okay, where are we missing? What's happening? And that's a good point. And if we're only down by $11,000, with that being said, that the Canadians haven't been able to come across since, what, April sometime? And there's not necessarily a way we can make that up. So if we added that in, our numbers actually would probably be above where we're even at now. And hopefully, hopefully.
We would be up a favor.
Okay, great. Good information. Thank you.
Uh, this is Jay. I'm wondering, does anyone have any information about the proposed dates for for the opening of the border? They're saying it might be like next year.
I talked to Corey Peterson on a pretty regular basis, and I know a couple of the other guys that work at the Customs Depot. And it seems like currently what they've heard the most is 2022.
For real?
So that's kind of crazy. Yeah, beginning of 2022.
What's the 24th? So I just found an article from the 21st that says they're talking about October 21st, 2020 is what this, what Canada said, but I think that what you just said is probably it's more that's more in in line with what I've heard from people on the ground as well, saying that 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 they're talking about a long term, the pandemic is basically eradicated or or under control in the United States. So noticing that 25% of our business comes from Canadians, and we can probably expect that that in 2021, that won't be a consistent of customers that we can count on. Like, that definitely has to weigh into our budget decision going forward for that. But that's also totally a moving target.
Yeah, I mean, it's all, it's all up. And it could at any time.
That that reporting that you saw, Jay, I thought that, too. I think that reporting is about they're extending it until, but they're not really saying they're intending to open it on. And so it seems like one of those emergency declarations that just kept keeps getting re-upped. I haven't seen any predictions that suggest that it's going to open anytime soon. And when we look at the numbers in our country of people that are still testing positive, I can't imagine Canada being excited about opening the border. So we look at at that, yes, like, we don't know when. We don't know when the border is going to open. And you know, our budgeting, if we're looking at realistic scenarios versus best case, worst case, it seems like our realistic scenario is a lot closer to the worst case, so that kind of the current status quo than to go back and say, we're going to be doing 2019 numbers again in 2021. And so, you know, we're showing that we're not really that far behind where we need the liquor budget to be, which is good news. So that's if this is our worst case scenario, we're kind of doing it right now. If this happens for the rest of next year, it's not a drastic. We're going to have to make up, you know, huge, huge number cuts, but I think it is something that we'll keep in mind as the budget develops, what we want to do to respond to what's likely to be a shortfall from the $200,000 transfer that we've
And and just having the doors open versus closing for a period of time and then doing the phone-in orders will will obviously add a little more money to the kitty as well. You know, that costs us a lot of money doing phone orders.
Yeah, I think I think all this conversation, you know, really, you know, points out the need to continually reassess what the situation is. I mean, as as a downtown business owner and others on the council as downtown business owners, I think we've all been in that position where, you know, through since the start, we responded in a lot of different ways. And we continue to respond based on what's happening and what's current today. We think might be happening tomorrow, but we have no guarantees. So, I mean, I'd like to have us start to think about what next year might be if if this, we've already really gotten through the most most of this season and relying on the local traffic to to get us through the winter. I mean, that might not be all that much different than than what we experience, you know, normally. So what I'm thinking is, we really need to focus on our plan for next year and figure out, you know, what are we going to do to try to maximize and adapt to whatever the conditions may be. And one of the things that that strikes me about this is, even though that you look at that 4% number for sales between eight and 10 P M. My guess is that in the months of July and August, that that's a greater number than 4% in those months because it's light out and that people are wandering around town. And that number, you know, might be misleading in the sense of what we're we're missing in in July and August, even into September. I know the evenings and darkness comes earlier, people are less likely to be wandering around. Obviously, through the wintertime, it's the local traffic. But is that something we can respond? Sorry, Chris, I didn't hear what you're saying.
Well, I think that, you know, you're right, in the in July and August, probably are when we get to October, November, December, January, February, April, it's probably 1% or less than or less than 1% between those hours. Just with the darkness and the cold and, you know, people just aren't out as late as they are in the summertime when it's beautiful out.
Chris, I believe you'll be able to give us some data on that. Like, you have the ability to report on a month-by-month basis of sales by hour. So we can, we'll dig into that and get you some information on on what it looks like in July and August versus other times of the year. Yeah, I hear what you're saying about really having to change and adapt, Tim, kind of on an ongoing basis. That's been our reality here for sure since April and, you know, maybe March. And I think that we're certainly going to try to position the budget in a way that you have the ability to do that next year. You know, the one fixed in stone number that you have to pick is the property tax levy. And so we'll think about what different liquor store results mean for the property tax levy, and we'll also select some strategies that the council can use next year to adjust if they need to.
I think the the piece that almost that has me the most concerned, I think, all things considered, really truly, the liquor store is in decent shape, considering what we've gone through. I would expect our revenue to be up next year for the fact, like Chris said, we were closed for almost two weeks, then we were doing basically phone-in for almost two months. So even if you add 10% to those months, I think our revenue should be okay. What I'm most concerned with is how we move forward, if we move forward, what we're going to do as far as the liquor store building itself in City Hall. What does what does this COVID downturn now mean to us moving forward? Obviously, you know, here lately in the last month and a half, we kind of put things on hold, but my question really is what we have to look at more so is, are we moving forward? And how are we going to pay for that? Are we set to pay for that, you know, in our tax levy? I think we had included some of that. And just how much would the liquor store not be able then to contribute to possibly those cash amounts? That's really more of a concern to me than if things stay the same as they are today. I can't imagine them getting much worse, but if they do, you know, then like Tim said, you kind of have to go back and play it day by day. But I kind of expect things, if they stay as they are right now, what does this mean moving forward for our project?
Yeah, we've looked at a little bit of that, but that'll definitely be a lot of what your conversation is when we talk about budget is not just what are the levy, what's it going to look like in 2021, but also how do these big projects fit into the picture? We'll have to think about, now that it's not going to happen next year, when do you want to see it? Is it just as quick as we can get it back in the picture? And and we'll revisit the ways that we had planned on paying for it and make sure those still make sense to you. Well, did anybody else have any other questions?
Yeah, just the question about the cash, no cash situation, you know, is there any any comments to press about? We could change that. What's preventing us from doing that?
Uh, nothing. We can do it. I don't think that I don't think that's an issue at all. In fact, I would say we we can start doing it.
I mean, I think that would be a good move. You know, I mean, I don't see it as being an issue either. And, you know, I guess as a cautionary measure early on, it made sense, but I think now we're seeing that isn't really an issue and maybe that would would improve sales for for some, you know, that might that might be reluctant to to not be able to pay.
We definitely can start taking cash. We will start doing that. As far as, as far as like, for example, being open on Sundays or extending hours at this time, I think that we should kind of stay the course, just because we are still in COVID protocol. And it's better to just kind of keep doing the same thing instead of starting something and then having to take it away if things get worse.
That makes sense to me, Chris. I think that we've we've
Because people are, people are pretty much trained.
Yep.
I lost you, Jay.
I liked him's suggestion. I wonder if my thing is not working well.
No, you're good.
Can you, you guys hear me better now? Okay, yeah, yeah, I've got this earbud thing, and it doesn't work terrible sometimes. I agree with Tim on the on the cash thing. I think that's a good step to start opening the business up a little bit more. And I also agree with with Kelly, you know, Kelly's assessments of the the financial situation moving forward. I would urge urge caution in our estimations, though, for next year. It seems to be like oh, did you lose me? Did you guys lose me or my back?
Nope. You're back.
Okay, okay, because I just missed a phone call or had a phone call come in. This is why I shouldn't ever do this on my phone. But, yeah, I would Um, but uh, yeah, urge, I would urge caution for for numbers for next year. And I do think that um that the the two hundred thousand dollar uh transfer, um, I think we should try and make that as much as we possibly can. Um, keeping in mind that, you know, we're kind of looking at a situation where we might have to double dip, you know, from reserves, which we're trying to build up right now. Um, so I do think that that's probably the question the council needs to really make her, you know, make our minds up about whether or not we want to pull from that reserve or um, or find another way to fund that 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 transfer. So, yeah, anyway, that's that's pretty much all I've I've got.
Well, I think you're right, Jay, that that
Well, I mean, we might have a really good November, too.
You know, the the two hundred thousand dollar transfer you talked about, Jay, I mean, I think what you're saying, Mike, is that we were on track to pay that uh for the year up to the up to this point, it means like numbers are going to be somewhat consistent to where we've been um, uh, this year so far. And hopefully, we'll be able to continue to make those payments. You know, if that's the worst case scenario, we should be able to make those payments next year based on that. And obviously, we're not going to be closed for that two weeks in March, and we won't be shut shut down uh with with uh uh phone-in orders only and um May, April, April and May like we were this year. And I think we've got a lot, lot more opportunity next year. And I think if we can try to assess where we might be able to make up some defaults, I mean, yeah, we can't replace Canadians uh when they're not going to be here, but uh maybe we can open those evening hours in uh July and August when people are around. May- maybe we uh, you know, think about that staffing issue that, you know, prevents you, you know, from doing that, but uh make sure we're adequately prepared to uh have the staff we need to uh to to run the store in a way that that needs to be run.
Yeah, what I was kind of thinking was uh, if if we can get to, you know, the winter's winter, we're not going to get any more people than we usually get, and there's not that many late shoppers. Get to, say, May, extend hours back to what they usually are in the summer with Sundays added, Friday and Saturday, ten o'clock closings. I think that would help quite a bit as as well, but between now and, you know, now in May, I don't really know if it would, if it would add up to a whole lot of money, seeing as it's, you know, one or two percent of our sales during that time.
Well, thanks, everybody.
Is that, that's pretty much all we were looking to accomplish?
That's all we wanted to do. And then uh we'll see y'all next Wednesday.
Thanks. Thanks for doing this. It's good to see that. So everybody, just let me know if there's any more info you'd like me to get for you. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris.
Take care, buddy.
Thank you.
Take care.